Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, September 17th, 2021. Ms. Kent, can you please call the roll?
Ames? Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand? Rotundo? Flattery? And Guanci?
I am here. Counselor Houseman, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Can you hear me? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, Counselor Houseman, flawless job. Thank you for doing that. And I heard through the grapevine, the City Hall grapevine, that you got yourself a new flagpole.
Yeah, yeah. Very nice stand. Compliments of our esteemed city clerk.
Very good. Nice work.
Thank you.
Okay, script for remotely conducted City Council meetings, Monday, September 13th, 2021. Smile. Okay. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before we get started, I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda, our president can hear me. Thumbs up or shake your head. Great. Good evening. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting and public hearings will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so in the following manner. It is recorded by the City of Beverly and live streamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. No in-person attendance of members of this pub, of the public will be permitted, and public participation in any public hearing conducted during this meeting shall be by remote means only. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22: All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee actually notified in this summit for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration, thereof, and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before the subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be with forth return to the full council. So all this means for those of you that are tuning in for the first time is, then rather than refer things to committee, we'll vote them up, we'll vote them on the floor as a full city council, as long as six people decide to vote in favor of that. So Ms. Kent, can I have a roll call vote? Yes, Ms. Kent?
Ames? Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Yep.
Flattery? Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Rotundo has no speaker. And Guanci.
Yes. So we'll say that we had at least six there, correct, Ms. Kent?
Correct.
And we have public hearings, so I need to read this also. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute slash unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and strictly for council, not for public comment, but if you would like to speak during the public hearing, please put your name there. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And our clerk's office does a wonderful job with the minutes. All right, I think that that's all I got. And public, please limit your comments to about three minutes. Before I go into our regular agenda, I thought it would be a good time to make a statement about what happened last week at the school committee meeting. Pretty upsetting meeting, rather vivid article in the Salem News, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the council, and I think that most of you, if not all of you, will agree with my remarks. Dear Honorable City Council, I think at this time it's appropriate to make a statement on behalf of myself and my colleagues about the school committee meeting that was held last week. For most of the past two decades, I've had the honor to serve as City Council President, and along with my fellow councilors have always welcomed and encouraged input from members of the public. We're only nine people, but we represent over 40,000 residents with different ideas, thoughts, theories, and suggestions. For the most part, residents speaking in public hearings or those who sign up to air their views have been respectful, concise, and with a little help from me, the chair, try to stay on topic. Even back in the day when City Hall favorite Renee Mary used to go toe-to-toe at the podium with Bill Scanlon, they were both the same height, and the podium was the same height. Some level of decorum was always present. Never before have I witnessed an elected official in the City of Beverly being treated with the disrespect that was shown War II School Committee Representative Dr. Kenian McKenzie by two belligerent, uninformed, and disrespectful speakers. Referring to Dr. McKenzie as her and she was utterly reprehensible. As anyone paying attention knows by now, Dr. McKenzie was elected to represent War II as a member of the city, of the school committee by the city council and the school committee, following the directions of the city charter. The vote was quick and unanimous. While it's okay to question, disagree, and have different opinions, it is not okay to behave in a way that the two speakers decided to behave last week. This type of behavior is not what Beverly is all about, and I commend Mayor Kayo, Dr. McKenzie, and the rest of the school committee to handling the negative, misdirected, and totally inappropriate onslaught in a truly professional manner. And although I was not able to attend tonight's ceremony at 6 o'clock at City Hall, Beverly, there is no place for hate in our city. So thank you all.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for unanimous consent to, for the council to endorse your statement. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. I'll take a second to that.
Second.
Second.
On a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Absolutely yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Counselor Ames, who are you in Machu Picchu?
Yes, Mr. President, I am. I started the morning in Machu Picchu and then went through the Sacred Valley on my way to Cusco right now. So the internet comes in, goes out, comes in, goes out. But it's a pleasure to be with you today.
Well, we look.
It was crazy to see, oh, one of the seven wonders of the world today with my friends.
Excellent. And we look forward to hearing about your trip when you get home. We'll give you one minute.
Thank you.
All right. What do we have time for? We have a public hearing set at seven, for 7:15. We have a public hearing at 7:25. We have four resolutions we want to do. So you know what I'm going to do in the four minutes that we have? Let's go to, accept the minutes of our previous meetings. Is that okay with you, Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting, which was held June 1st, 2021. No, yeah, 2021. It was a special budget finance and property committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. And next I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our City Council meeting, which was held on June 2nd, 2021. It was also a special budget finance and property committee and a meeting of the committee of the whole.
Moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. And I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting, which was held on June 22nd, 2021, and it was a regular City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. And last but certainly not least, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our special City Council meeting, which was held on August 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Minutes are accepted. Let's go to call to order our first public hearing on Order Number 141. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Order Number 147, 2021, ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, September 13th at 7:15 PM via Google Meet, live on BevCam, relative to the petition from National Grid for Plan 3045117 for Railroad Ave. And this was in the newspaper on August 13th, '21.
And Ms. Kent, who is here from National Grid?
I'm...I'm not sure.
My name is Matthew Farren.
Matthew.
There you are. I recognize the name. Mr. Farren, thank you.
Thank you for having me, everyone.
What are we gonna do?
All right. So this first one is for Railroad Ave. Both of these petitions that you have in front of you tonight are for the same project, the Windover Project on Rantoul Street. They, they've taken down the buildings and have begun to start their new building project there. For the Railroad Ave petition, that is to come across from the corner of Park Street across Railroad Ave, roughly 40 feet or so from an existing manhole of ours into the, the Windover Property, and that's going to be to temporarily feed their construction trailer.
Thank you, Mr. Farren. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
City Council, Counselor Houseman?
Yes, I just have a question regarding, what street is going to be opened or cut over for this conduit to go in?
It would be Railroad Ave. The, the manhole, as it currently sits right now, is right on the corner of Park and Railroad. So we would begin by breaking a conduit from that particular manhole, and it would go across the street at a diagonal, roughly 40 feet from that manhole into, into the Windover Property.
And, and this would involve cutting open the street, or is this all underground work?
This would involve opening the road, a trench for one four-inch PVC conduit.
So Railroad Ave was recently paved, and I wonder if either Mr. Collins, Mr. Ailes, the mayor, or you, Mr. Farren, can tell the council whether or not there are mitigation monies being paid to, to repave this section that's going to be torn up of our relatively brand-new street?
I would have to, has the, has the entirety of Railroad been paved? I, I just haven't been down the street lately. All the way down to Park Street?
Uh, well, I guess, yeah, so I guess location, I don't have the, the, the plot plan in front of me. If this is the location of Railroad Ave that has not been repaved, then I guess I would end my questioning, because I'm not concerned about that. I'm sure that'll be taken care of. I've been more concerned about the layout if it's going through Park, Railroad Ave between Rantoul and Cabot. If that's not the case, then I don't have the concern I'm questioning about.
Okay. No, it's going to be Park across Railroad, and it should not have any interference as far as Railroad heading across Rantoul towards Cabot.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was my concern. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Houseman. Any other members of the council with a question? Counselor Rand has a finger up.
Thank you. I totally forgot that we typed me in the chat. I will do that next time.
That's okay. All of us.
Yeah, getting back, back into the virtual meeting. I just wanted to ask, I guess, I, I thank you, Counselor Houseman, for sharing your concern. I think you were wondering if we were going to cut into Rantoul Street, but I know this is going to cut into a pretty, a street that's already in kind of poor shape. And I'm just curious if you can share with me, will National Grid be, what kind of repair will National Grid be doing after opening the street, or is there money being put into the city budget as a result of cutting open the street for a future repair of the, the road?
As far as speaking to money that would be paid for the repair of the road, I mean, this is a customer service. The, the company has requested service to their trailer on a temporary power to their trailer. So as it would, so as a secondary service, the customer is responsible for doing that trench work. So it, it would be, it would be Windover doing the trenching up, up into close proximity of the manhole. Usually we have them stop about two or three feet shy, and then we would have our civil contractor, who's electrically qualified, to break the conduit into the rest of the way. So it's, it's not really, I, I guess I'm having a hard time answering that for you.
No, that, that makes total sense. I, I, that makes a lot of sense, because it is Beverly, it's Beverly Crossing requesting the, the new service, right, to the trailer? Or is that, I guess, Windover doing the construction? But it's the Beverly Crossing project. That makes sense. So Beverly Crossing probably has in their, in their process some funding for that, that road repair. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Rand. Any other members of the council? Type me or raise your hand. How about members of the public? Three, two, one. Okay, I will close our public hearing, and then I will entertain a motion to approve National Grid's request.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Flowers, you're on my second. Come on.
I know. Sorry, I was trying to find the unmute.
All right. And a roll call, Ms. Kent.
Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Let's call to order our 7:25 public hearing on Order Number 148. Ms. Kent?
Order Number 148 from 2021, ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, September 13th at 7:25 PM via Google Meet, live on BevCam, relative to the petition from National Grid for Plan Number 3045117, Park Street. And this was in the newspaper on August 13th as well.
Great. Mr. Farren, you have the stage again.
All right, thank you. This one, so at the location where the building is being built, there was an old transformer, an old Patmont Transformer, and a lot of the secondaries that fed some of the buildings and businesses along Rantoul Street were fed from the secondary side of that transformer. In order for the building to be, continue to be being built, we have to remove that transformer out of its current location. So what the idea was, was to be able to refeed those secondary conductors down through Park Street. So the petition that you have is for, that's for the installation of conduit from a pole, pole number 2391. It's roughly 150 feet to the manhole, Park Street at Broadway on the corner there. So we would be installing new conduits. One new four-inch conduit from the pole to the manhole.
Okay. Any questions from members of the City Council?
Mr. President?
Counselor Houseman?
Yeah, we have two members from the planning department here, Emily Hutchings and Dees Dees Dechamps, and I wonder if either of them could speak to reassurance to the council that what I assume to be the case is, in fact, the case to their knowledge, that, that Beverly Crossing, as part of their project, does have an agreement with the city in some fashion to repave those, the streets that are going to be, be cut up. I, I assume that to be the case. I believe that's fairly standard. But if either of them could speak to that, I would be very pleased to hear that.
President Guanci, this is Emily Hutchings. I can take a stab at it if you're comfortable with that.
Of course, Emily.
So Counselor Houseman, to answer your question, I cannot answer that off the top of my head, but I'm going to assume that we would not have, or the planning board would not have approved the site plan review without some sort of condition related to the street. And it's something that typically the engineering department reviews and weighs in on, and it is part of the condition of approval. And so the, the city is comfortable with the plan, and it, there's a plan to move forward. So I can share that with you when I'm in the office tomorrow, but I don't have access to it at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Yeah, I, I, I'm reassured. I, I do believe it's fairly standard, but just looking for a little reassurance. If you could reach out and let us know tomorrow, just to confirm that, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else on the council have a question? Counselor Houseman, your, your issue, is that going to, do we want to hold the public hearing, or will we be able to move forward? You're good with that?
I, I'm good with that, Mr. President. I, I will have continuing interaction with the company, so if there are any issues, we could, they can always pick them up later. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any members of the public wish to comment on this one? Three, two, one. I will close our public here, and I would entertain a motion to approve National Grid's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flattery?
Flowers? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Thank you, everybody. And Mr. Farren, thank you for being here from National Grid.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have resolutions. Ms. Kent, is it okay we go back to those?
Yes.
Okay. Our first resolution is for Senior of the Year, and I think Nancy is on our call. Aren't you, Nancy?
She is.
And Nancy was presented the Senior of the Year Award at Senior Day at Lynch Park by Counselor Flowers and Counselor Feldman and Counselor Ames. Did I miss anybody? Nice job, ladies. And I'm going to read it. I think Nancy, Ms. Bork is a wonderful, was a wonderful choice. I've known her for an awful long time. So let's go. Resolution, Nancy Bork, 2021 Senior of the Year. Whereas Nancy Bork was born and raised in Beverly, growing up on Ashton Street. She graduated from Beverly High School in 1967 and from the Beverly Hospital School of Practical Nursing in 1968. She married in 1970, moved to Ohio, where she lived, worked, and raised her family for almost 20 years. She raised two children, Robert Fooks and Dana Fooks Hendershot, and now has five grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Whereas Nancy moved back to Beverly in the early 1990s to take care of her aging mom and to work as a nurse. That's a typo. It says early 1900s. Did you catch that one, Julie, when you read it? Okay, we'll fix that.
I was gonna say, yes, I, I know I did not read it as 1900s at Senior Day at Lynch Park.
Whereas Nancy retired from the Children's Center for the Communication Beverly School for the Death in 2015. This is when she began her next career as a community volunteer. Nancy sold the family home on Ashton Street and now resides at Turtle Woods in Beverly. Whereas Nancy began volunteering at the Senior Center in 2016. She helps in any way asked, including sign-in and techno, technology assistant at the Senior Center, weekly trips to pick up breakfast items, serving as the photographer, and helps out with anything and everything she is asked for at the Senior Center's special events. Nancy also assists with preparing the newsletters for mailing and delivers to Turtle Woods and Turtle Creek. Whereas for the past two years, Nancy has volunteered, has served as a volunteer medical transportation driver for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program of Part of Senior Care, Inc., providing transportation to older adults who need to get to their doctor's appointments. Whereas Nancy is a longtime election worker for the City of Beverly of the Ayers Rileside School, Ward 1 Precinct 1. Whereas reliable, enthusiastic, willing to help, caring, pleasant, compassionate, great sense of humor, and a joy to be around. If you are sick, Nancy will bring you flowers. If you need comfort, Nancy is right there beside you. These are just some of the words that Nancy's nominated issues to describe her. Whereas Nancy's daughter Dana said, "My friends and family in Ohio often ask me why my mom doesn't move back to Ohio, especially having grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I think about that a lot, and I always arrive at the same conclusion. It's where she is happy. She enjoys the beach, seeing it rise up the coast. A Red Sox or Patriots game, Beverly is her home. It has always been. She still jumps in her car and drives 10 hours like it's no big deal to see her grandchildren's special events and milestones. She will never miss any of those special times with her family. Now therefore, the City Council and the City of Beverly does hereby honor this daughter of Beverly. We wish her and her wonderful family good health and continued happiness together in order that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon city records." Congratulations, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the City of Beverly, and thanks to everyone who gave me this honor. Beverly has a lot of perks for seniors, and I think we need to get the word out there, and there's a lot for them to do, and a lot being done for them, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
That's it. Nancy, do you want to introduce any of your friends that are here to witness you getting your, officially getting your?
I don't think anyone's here.
Okay.
We've been, we've parodied long enough.
Good enough, but it's so glad to see you.
Thank you.
Just a real quick story. I've known Nancy for so many years, and for years she's been volunteering at the Boston Marathon. And I'll never forget, well, I forget the year. It was either 20, 2009 or 2013. I think it was 2009 when I ran, and I remember, and I think Nancy works over by BC, and I remember slugging up one of the hills, and I looked at the crowd, and it was a familiar face. Nancy Bork was in the crowd, helping out. And I ended up finishing everything. And you know what she did the next day? She came to SuperSub with her volunteer marathon yellow jacket and gave it to me. And I still have it somewhere in my closet. Thank you so much, Nancy. So I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
You bet, Mr. President. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Uh, now I would like to turn the show over to Councilor, um, Todd Rotundo, and he will take care of Ward Number 162. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as we know, Gin Wallace has been with the city for 14 years in the capacity of Beverly Main Street. I've worked with Gin on many, uh, capacities personally. We've done a lot together as a business owner. She was extremely helpful during the pandemic, as still is. Um, I thought it was a great opportunity to recognize her. So we recognize Virginia Wallace, better known at To-All as Gin, is the very successful executive director of Beverly Main Street, will retire this September after 14 years of leadership. Whereas Gin moved to Beverly in 2006 with her daughter Sophie, where she resides in the Rylerside neighborhood along the Danvers River. Gin has always had a passion for the water. Whereas Gin has an MBA from Boston University and, and a dark, uh, education from Boston State UMass Boston. Prior to her joining Beverly Main Street in 2007, she worked for large corporations such as Sara Lee, Gillette, and NCR. She came to Beverly with business experience, carried an MBA as one of her credentials and something more unique, political savvy. She knew about the politics of her, her job and how to keep touch with the community as she executed her mission. Whereas Gin came to Beverly Main Street in 2007 as the organization was beginning to focus on the economic redevelopment of our downtown. With strength and style, she led the organization in addressing needed zoning changes to allow the transient, transit-oriented residential development. Whereas she fostered the creation and then carried out the management of the Beverly Arts District, which raised the profile, the talent in artists in our city and region, enhancing the creative economy. She is probably best known for creating many impactful events held downtown to highlight the district. Whereas Gin is executive director of Beverly Main Streets and Beverly Art District in downtown Beverly. Gin oversees all aspects of both programs, including economic development, marketing, programming, fundraising, and outreach. Whereas her ability to envision new possibilities kept the organization fresh and an activity downtown current, including its signature events such as Arts Fest and the Block Parties. Whereas in 2011, she led the initiative to create Downtown 2020, the strategic plan for revitalizing downtown Beverly, which the organization follows to this day, has resulted in near zero vacancy rates. Whereas the org, she organized and led two community-wide visioning discussions and planning for Downtown 2020 and Downtown 2030, focusing on what citizens wanted to see downtown, downtown, and how they wanted to serve them. Whereas Gin has been a well-known face of Beverly Main Street. Her tremendous network and skills with people, agencies, and organizations that were necessary for the success of the mission were evident in her daily, her work daily. She always carried a smile and was very effective and efficient in creating trusted relationships throughout the community, community. Whereas she brought liveliness and energy which was contagious. Her kindness and willingness to engage in many community activities, helping others model community engagement. Her success in the, in the development of downtown helped to infuse $200 million in economic investment in the city. This success was recognized throughout the Commonwealth. She was invited to speak about her success, success in other communities repeatedly. Whereas during the early days of the pandemic, she worked closely with the city and business communities to inform all Beverly businesses of information and resources needed to help businesses navigate through the challenging times of the pandemic. She informed a restaurant, she formed a restaurant task force and worked with the city to help create outside dining for downtown restaurants. Whereas she helped facilitate 450 new transient-oriented development housing units through public investment of $60 million and private investment of $82 million. Whereas she helped create a new invent program in, in many new creative businesses and locally owned restaurant-owned downtown. Gin Wallace's service to the City of Beverly over the last 14 years has been unparalleled. Now therefore, be it known that the Beverly City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Beverly, wishes to express the utmost gratitude for the hard work and dedication of Gin Wallace in our community. Thank you.
Do you want to say a couple of things? Are you here still? Gin?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor and a dream really to work in this community, and I appreciate all the, the credits, but I couldn't have done it without Heather and with our army of 125 volunteers. So thank you very much. I, I really appreciate this.
Thank you. Councilors, uh, anything to say? Council Rand?
Thank you. Um, as the Ward Two City Counselor, I've got to work with Gin closely from the beginning of my service to the city on the council, and I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, Gin, for, for all of the many hours that you sat with me in your office, and we shared visions for the city and, um, some, you know, frustrations, but through all of those kind of, um, changes and ups and downs, you, you always persevered with a vision towards making downtown Beverly, um, even better than it is today, right? So just kind of always moving forward with the arts district and, um, being willing to tackle thinking 10 and 20 years down the road. I really appreciated working with you and all that time that, um, we got to spend together thinking about Beverly, the place that we, we love. So I, your love of Beverly comes through with all your work and every time we get to connect. So it's been a pleasure, and I hope you get to now just sit back and enjoy Arts Fest and enjoy the block parties and, you know, maybe volunteer if you want, but just enjoy it. You've worked hard for it. So thank you, Gin.
Well, thank you, Estelle. The feeling is mutual, as you know.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Council Flowers?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, Gin, I just also wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you so much for what you've done. As someone who works downtown, although in, it's sort of a, a non-conventional business, I suppose, you know, working at First Baptist is not a business like many of the others, but that does put me in the position of receiving lots of Gin's emails and updates. And, uh, Council Rotundo, you mentioned it in the resolution, but Gin, the communication that you put out to businesses as the pandemic was beginning was just, uh, constant and consistent, and I have to imagine that it was one of the really important touch points in a really uncertain time. You know, I would open my email and think, oh, he, here's another email from Gin, really just making sure that our downtown businesses and our small businesses are aware of what opportunities there are. You know, I think you were really clear about sharing grant opportunities, um, payroll support opportunities. So I, I just want to say, as someone who had the chance to see how much communication you were putting out in a really difficult time, um, that I think is, is, I, I know it was sort of also at a time where you were moving towards retirement, and you're here, here you are now. Um, and what a, what a difficult end, you know, to navigate with our business community, and you did it with grace and, uh, poise and tenacity, which is, is no surprise. And I just thank you. Um, and like Estelle said, I hope, you know, I hope to see you, I was thinking of Beverly New Year as well, but all of the different opportunities where now you can come and be a part of what you've helped to build. And I, I do want to recognize, I think it can't be overstated that Beverly Main Streets, as Gin said, it, it is not a, not a huge staff, relies on the dedication of Gin and Heather and, and all the volunteers that they have been able to bring into it. And it, I think it says something about Gin that so many volunteers have been involved. It takes a really amazing leader to get people involved on a volunteer level. So Gin, I think that's pretty telling about you. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Julie. You and your colleagues at the church have been wonderful partners for us. So we really appreciate that, and I appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
The feeling is mutual. Congratulations on your retirement.
Uh, Council Copeland?
Yes, thank you. So Gin, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for your hard work and your dedication, and, and most importantly, uh, your vision and, and your capabilities, just like, uh, Councilor Flowers said, being able to rally everyone together around a united vision, uh, that's truly transformed the, the scope and the future of Beverly. Um, I'm downtown almost every day and had to go get my smoothie today, so. Uh, so just those small things really make a huge difference in how we utilize downtown and how, uh, we as a community are able to come together, even with the new influx of people. You know, I'm able to meet new, different people that I haven't met before downtown, uh, just because of the hard work, the dedication, the vision that you and, uh, all your people have laid out. So, so thank you for that. I, and I look forward, uh, even though you're stepping down now, your influence is going to be felt for, for many years to come. So, so thank you.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate that. And thank you for supporting our small businesses downtown.
No, no problem at all. Anytime. Tastes great.
Uh, Council Ames?
Hi, Andy DeShamps. Thank you so much, Mr. President. You know, I, Gin, you are a friend as much, um, as an influencer, because you are a true leader in this community. And when I have questions about business, and I, as a small business person myself, I definitely add my opinions about small business and what can support it, but you always give me sound, thoughtful, reasoned, imaginative, um, wonderful advice as to how to look at the, on your two feet on the ground, um, communication with all the businesses in the city, and your ability to vision as to what we and who we can be as a community. So thank you so much, and, you know, just the best to you moving forward.
Thank you, Stacy. Enjoy your climb.
We're finally finished climbing. Been climbing all week. They're all laughing here.
I unmuted. I was chewing my ice. Uh, Council Hausmann?
Hi, Gin. I, I just want to congratulate you on your retirement, but, uh, equally, uh, just really salute the, the vision that you've had for downtown Beverly and how the work that you've done and, and Heather, um, has really transformed and laid the groundwork for transforming, uh, the Beverly that we know today. Um, and, uh, in particular, I guess for me, I, I, I have special appreciation for the work you've done, uh, in the arts, uh, the arts community and, and remember, uh, uh, remember the time when the cabot closed down and, and needed to be saved and, and the work you did, uh, you know, to help, to help in that regard. So I, I, I second, you know, the, the kudos you've received from my colleagues, so I won't, I won't repeat that. Um, but, uh, job well done for the City of Beverly and, and deeply appreciated.
Well, thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. I remember when the cabot came up for sale, and we were all so nervous about what might happen to that building. And I remember you being the first person to gather people together to figure out how to save it. And Joe Broderick and I would sit at Chianti, like at 5:00 every day. Well, not every day, but, and with our cameras, like literally taking pictures of every van that pulled up to go into the building and then doing research to find out who they were and hoping they weren't a developer. So thank you for saving that anchor, most important property in our downtown.
Well, it, it, as, as you well know, uh, with the work that you've done, you know, it, it, it takes a village, it takes a community. Uh, a lot of people were involved in that, as well as the rest of the arts district, uh, and, and the work that, uh, Main Streets has done. So again, appreciate it and enjoy your retirement. Do hope to see you around town.
Thank you. And I used to live in your ward, so I know how hard you work at this, and I appreciate that as well.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you, you know, uh, Ward Four's loss is, is Ward One's gain, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mayor Cahill is here.
Thanks, Mr. President. Gin, it's so good to see you. Uh, it, it, it's, it's nice you live in Councilor Rotundo's ward, but you know you could call him no matter where you live, because, uh, everybody does. Um, but, but Gin, my gosh, I'm, I'm looking at Mary, Mary Grant, our former state representative and longtime board member who talked me into joining the board some years ago, and one of the best things I've ever done for learning and understanding, uh, what Beverly needs. And so I remember your first day on the job, Gin, and, and the, uh, the amazing work you've done all this time. Um, you know, I, I don't want to dwell on it, but all the, all the difficult and important work throughout COVID that you've done has really mattered to a lot of people. Um, the wonderful events that we all know that, that the community loves, and we all know they're just a, a small bit. It's like the iceberg above the surface for what, what Main Streets does. So just to touch on the, all the work you did on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Ellis Square, that's been a, a huge success, and you share a big part of the credit, um, helping to create our cultural district and our arts district, or maybe the other, the other order. Uh, but they're both incredibly important to our downtown and, and to getting to where we're, uh, I think we're starting to make real strides in promoting our arts and cultural economy. Um, the work you did with us on, on a number of, of zoning efforts, from working with Mayor Scanlon to working with me and, and, and our planning departments and city councils and downtown business community and, and all that have, that done so much to, um, to really make our downtown so vibrant. Uh, and, and Council Rotundo mentioned the transit-oriented development efforts. A lot of work goes into trying to get the right words on a page and an ordinance to actually get what you need. And a lot of work went into those initial ordinances and then some, some tweaks and some updates as we've gone. Um, and I remember, and, and I know you wouldn't claim credit for it, you go right to crediting Kennedy Smith, but rooftops before retail is what you preached for years. Uh, and in other words, getting more people, more of a critical mass of people living in an area so that the retail can, can really thrive with both walk-to business and people coming from, from the neighborhoods and from out of town. But certainly, you've got to have people living downtown to really make those businesses work. Um, and it has mattered, and it's really, you know, it's really worked. So, um, thank you. And, and, and also for all the work in recruiting and tugging at and at times begging certain types of businesses to come take a look and, you know, we, and, and trying to get that right mix of retail as well. So you've done so much amazing work, so much of what Beverly is today, that it wasn't 20 years ago, 15 years ago, so much of the things that people love about the community and, and rave about, you've had a, a huge hand in. And I, and I know you're right in crediting, uh, Heather for sure, and all the, all the volunteers. And every one of them and us will go right back to pointing to you and say, "Thank you, Gin," because you've been amazing for our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mike. You don't know what those words mean. You guys, we can't do anything without the city. And you and your colleagues and the, especially the planning department and the DPW, and it, it's just been a phenomenal experience working with them. Um, and so I appreciate that you set the tone for that leadership. It's meant, it's really made a difference for us as an organization. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Um, Gin, I know there are a number of board members on the, uh, on our call. Does anybody want to make a comment or, uh, throw some praise Gin's way? Mary Grant, I was hoping you, uh, sign, uh, jump on.
How can I not? I feel like I've been around with Main Street since the beginning through trying to figure out what it should be, um, to, to, where's the best place? And I think that maybe that's what I appreciate about your leadership, Gin, is always working very hard to be able to identify where is the best place to move at a given point in time, so that when the effort is put in by all those volunteers, by you, by dedicated boards of very powerful people in this city, you were able to keep them on the boards for years, so that you knew when to play the right note, so that people could always feel like the energy they put in, it always showed at the end. And I just think that's genuine leadership, and you deserve the accolades that this council, I want to thank you for acknowledging her and the mayor, because it's huge what she's done. And she just pulls together the minions of little, little organizations, little businesses, single business, single people businesses, and Gin never, never lets anyone off the, you know, never leaves anyone out. Make sure that she's touched all of them. So thank you. I appreciate it as a citizen, and I have loved what you've been able to pull together and happen downtown.
Thank you, Mary. You know how I feel about you. So I appreciate those kind words.
They're true.
Great. Thank you, Mary Grant. Um, just to wrap it up, Jen, you know, you came on board back in 2007 when Main Streets really didn't have direction. Uh, you got people like Mary Grant involved and you've taken it to a whole nother level. And it's just amazing what you've done during the pandemic for small, small people up and down Cabot and Rantoul Street. We can't thank you enough and we can only hope that your successor will do half as good a job as you. So thank you for everything.
Well, thank you, Paul. I think you'll be very pleased with, um, my successor who will be starting next week, actually.
We can't wait. Do we know yet?
I'm sorry, what?
I, does the public know yet?
No.
Okay. I just didn't want to miss out on anything.
You'll be the first to know, Paul.
All right.
And it's been a pleasure to work with. I was gonna say, it's been a pleasure to work with you as one of our oldest downtown businesses celebrating 50 years.
Yeah, we're on, uh, well, the pandemic kind of killed the celebration and, uh, we're closing it on 52, if you can believe that. So I guarantee we'll make it to 52. I don't know much after that, though. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Council Flaherty is in the house. Thank you for joining us. Now, now we are complete. Uh, we have two more resolutions that, um, I don't know how he does it. Council Rotundo did me a favor and found time to attend the Eagle Court of Honor on Saturday at the Co-Community Center. And he read the resolutions to them and gave them, uh, presented them to them on behalf of the city council. So thank you, Todd. Um, I'll read them and then we'll just take a quick vote on, if that's okay. Two amazing young individuals, uh, the Galucci family, they live in North Beverly, have three boys that are marvelous. It's amazing the things that they do. So let's hear about two of them. Uh, this is order number 163, Kyle. Resolution for Kyle Galucci Eagle Scout. Whereas Kyle Galucci held many leadership positions with the Boy Scouts, including serving as Troop Scribe, Patrol Leader, Assistant Patrol Leader, Senior Patrol Leader and Troop Scribe. Whereas Kyle was selected for the, selected for and completed the National Youth Leadership Training Program and attended the National Boy Scout Jamboree in West Virginia. He also earned the World Conservation Award during his time with the Scouts. Whereas Kyle and a team of Scouts built a footbridge to replace a rotten one in the Norwood Pond, uh, Norwood Pond Woods. His project included presenting and getting approval from the Beverly Conservation Commission, fundraising for supplies, securing skilled adult volunteers to help with construction and putting together a safety plan for his scout volunteers. Construction went smoothly and now the footbridge is enjoyed by hundreds of Beverly residents trekking through the area. If you haven't been there, it is a must. Whereas Kyle Galucci earned the rank of Eagle Scout on November 6th, 2019. Whereas Kyle, uh, Galucci graduated from Essex, Essex Tech in May of 2020. And while at the tech, he served as a class representative, ran for the conference championship cross-country king, and also ran for the spring track team. Whereas Kyle was selected to represent Essex Tech at the annual Alliance for Vocational Education Conference at the Massachusetts State House. Kyle spoke to local educators, businesses and elected officials about his experiences at Essex Tech. Whereas Kyle Galucci became the first cooperative student to work for Mercedes-Benz as an automotive technician. Kyle accepted a full-time position after graduation and continues to work with them today. Now therefore, the city council and the city of Beverly does hereby honor this son of Beverly. We wish him good health, happiness and great success in order that the clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon city records. Uh, Council Rotundo, how did everything go? Good?
Excellent. Um, it was well attended. There were, it was just a great ceremony. It was great to be able to recognize the two boys and be able to read the, um, resolution. So thank you for giving me the honor to, uh, join in their accomplishments.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Absolutely, yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Now let's move on to the younger brother. Resolution for Ryan Galucci Eagle Scout. Whereas Ryan Galucci currently attends Essex Tech and has earned varsity to the letters in both track and soccer. He was chosen by his teammates as captain of the JV soccer team and won the leadership award in the fall of 2018. Ryan also served as the place kicker for the Fall 2 2020 season and returned to the team this fall. Whereas Ryan earned a co-op position with Semper HVAC in Beverly in the spring of 2021. He will continue to work with Semper until his graduation from Essex Tech in 2022. Ryan is also a member of the National Honor Society, DECA and Skills USA. Whereas during his scouting career, Ryan has served as a patrol leader and assistant patrol leader and senior patrol leader. He was selected to attend Brown Seed Leadership Program where he excelled to the point of being given a position on the staff. He has held that position for three years. Whereas Ryan's Eagle Scout Project benefited the Riley Rocks Foundation. After fundraising over 20, uh, $12,000, no, $1,200, Ryan and team of scouts put together 100 care bags for pediatric cancer patients. The bags were filled with personal care and comfort items which for patients to bring back and forth from treatments and appointments. Whereas Ryan Galucci earned the rank of Eagle Scout on July 29, 2021 and will be attending college in the fall of 2022 after graduating from Essex Tech in the spring. Now therefore, the city council and the city of Beverly does hereby honor this son of Beverly. We wish him good health, happiness and great success in order that city clerks spread a copy of this resolution upon city records. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Copeland?
Absolutely.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
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 Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
I am a yes. And for those of you, congratulations to you both. And for those of you that, uh, know their mom, Jen Galucci, she's been involved in anything and everything, uh, all while her boys were in school and she continues to be involved to this day. Very lucky to have her as a Beverly resident. Um, okay, we're on page two, finally. Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 150, Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $10,000 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the fire and police departments to purchase naloxone and related naloxone and medical supplies to respond to the opiate crisis related calls. This grant award amount represents a half of the grant allocation that would be awarded during fiscal year 22. The remainder of the funds will be dispersed midway through fiscal year 22. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expected for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at September 13, 2021 meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And, uh, I'm sure she's been dying to, uh, put her camera on and tell us all about this grant. Uh, Grant Director Catherine Barrett is here somewhere. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Chairperson Guansey. Um, it's good to see everybody after the, um, summer break. And, um, yes, we received a, uh, $10,000 grant from the Department of Public Health for Narcan, also known as naloxone. Both the Beverly Police and Fire Departments use this, um, drug when they're responding to, uh, individuals who have a substance use issue and, and need to have their life saved. And so I just want to say a special thank you to Sergeant Mark Panjwani, who is also the Medical Director for the Beverly Police Department. He, uh, manages this grant. And, um, the total grant funding for the year, as, um, Lisa Kent mentioned, will be 20,000, but they're, um, issuing it in two installments. So, uh, you'll probably see this back in front of the council in the, in the January, February timeframe for the remaining half of the funding. Um, but yeah, it'd be great for the council to accept and approve.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions? Council Rand?
Thank you, President Guansey. Um, I, I wanted to just comment first that this is a really important grant to receive. And, um, we as city councilors receive, um, updates on, um, arrests and things like that, events through the police department. And you can see very clearly that, um, there would be a number of more deaths in the city without Narcan being provided to our first responders and our, you know, safety department. So it's a really important grant to get. And it, but it does make me think, um, and Ms. Barrett, you might know about this. Are there grants available that are also more along the lines of preventative measures so that we can get to the point of reducing the need for the Narcan? Just curious if that's something that our department or our administration and you are working towards?
Uh, was that question directed at, at me, Catherine? Yeah?
Um, yeah, through President Guansey to the administration in general. And I, I understand it's a bit off topic if now is not the best time to address that. We can talk about it at a different, maybe upcoming meetings.
We also do receive the jail arrest diversion grant from the Department of Mental Health and that's a $180,000 grant that funds two co-responder clinicians that are embedded in the Beverly Police Department and then the Gloucester Police Department. It's a regional grant that covers six communities. And that grant is aimed at, uh, prevention and diversion of people from either emergency rooms or incarceration. So that grant is really helpful in channeling folks who have substance use and/or mental health use issues into some treatment programs to get them some help. So I do consider that to be, um, a preventative program that we do receive grant funding for. Um, there, there may be other grant opportunities for prevention. I might have to do some grant research to see what's available, uh, for opportunities for the state of Massachusetts and our, our cities and towns. But, um, but yeah, the jail arrest diversion one is, is definitely one that helps with prevention and supports that folks need.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, let me see. Okay. I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the grant. Accept it.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Ms. Kent, order number 151.
Order number 151, Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Christopher Chigas, 80 Fossil Street, Suite 101, PBD, Mass, to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process. Attaches Mr. Chigas's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John LaLachar. Mr. Chigas's term will be effective from September 27, 2021 until September 27, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Uh, Mr. Chigas has been a, uh, constable here in the city of Beverly for 25 years. Is, is, uh, she's been signed up by the police chief. So if nobody has any problems with this, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I, excuse me? I think we have seven days for the mayor.
An appointment. I'm sorry, Ms. Kent. Please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Thank you.
So you can.
Order number 152, Dear Honorable City Council, the solicitor's office currently has three attorney positions, the city solicitor, one full-time assistant solicitor and one part-time assistant solicitor. The part-time position, which is a 25-hour a week position, currently is vacant and we plan to post for a new hire soon. As you know, from your involvement in much of what we do, the city is busier than ever with issues and initiatives, including clean energy, diversity, capital improvements, union negotiations and the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, among other things. In light of this, it has been my view for some time that the city needs to convert the part-time position to a full-time position, increasing the number of hours of the position from 25 to 35 hours per week. The salary for the part-time assistant solicitor is originally budgeted for fiscal year 2022 is $65,918. And the salary, salary range for the full-time assistant solicitor position is approximately $90,000 to $96,000, depending on experience. Both positions are eligible for enrollment in the city's health insurance plan. The net budgetary impact for the remainder of fiscal year 2022 would be an increase in the personnel account, personnel account of between $12,650 and $17,380. And fiscal year 2022, we anticipate handing this via an interdepartmental mental transfer from the litigation account, although if unforeseen circumstances arise with litigation, it might be necessary to seek a supplemental appropriation later in the fiscal year. The FY 2023 budget would propose funding this as a full-time position. I respectfully request that the city council vote to support the conversion of this part-time assistant solicitor position to a full-time position. The city solicitor and I will be in attendance at your meeting tonight, meaning to discuss any questions you may have. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Okay. Before we go to the council for questions, why don't we go to Mayor Cahill first?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So, I mean, the, the letter is fairly detailed on this. I guess I, I would just add, um, you know, I, I've spoken with some of you along the way. We've known for some time that we really need more capacity in the office. I think we, we hadn't come, uh, forward before now because we also had been involved in some, uh, some litigation on a couple of fronts, which you all have been well aware of. Um, and so we, we looked at certain lines as, as needing attention in the budget. Um, I would say at this point, we will continue to need, you know, to fund our outside counsel line and our litigation line. Um, and those ebb and flow, uh, depending on, you know, what the needs are. At the same time, I'll say that, uh, both Ms. Williams and, uh, Mr. Dole have, which makes sense. We'd hope this would be the case. And, and because of their abilities, um, you know, having been at this now for several years, have been developing expertise in certain areas that have required outside counsel. And that's not to say that outside counsel was never needed in those areas, but we're able to do more in-house than we were, uh, in some of those areas. And, and yet at the same time, as the letter says, um, the number of fronts on which the, the, um, we need to turn to the solicitor's office for, uh, for legal counsel and legal, legal efforts. Um, you know, some of our, some of our recent work around, um, uh, alternative energy, clean and renewable energy, um, has required a lot of, a lot of time. Um, some of our, you know, so U.S. counselors, uh, have, have, um, questions and needs for, you know, for, um, the solicitor's office to both counsel and guide and also help with, um, with legislative efforts. There's a whole range of things. Solicitor knows best because she works, she's in it every day, all day. Uh, but there is no doubt in my mind that, A, we have a fantastic solicitor's department, uh, legal department with Ms. Williams, Mr. Dole and, and Mr. Benson. Um, and, and it's, it's just time. It's, uh, really, really the, the volume of work demands it. So I really, I, I, I do greatly appreciate your consideration. And, uh, as I said, Ms. Williams can certainly answer questions better than I on this front.
Um, okay. Why don't we hear from Ms. Williams before we, uh, go to the council for questions? Ms. Williams?
I completely concur with everything that the mayor said, and I think the letter explains it. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't really have anything to add at this point other than that we, um, just to, to, uh, reiterate that, um, Assistant Solicitor Dole has in particular taken a lot, uh, taken on a lot of the labor work, um, that typically outside counsel, uh, handles. He, he's done all the negotiations with the ASME units this year and handled several, uh, arbitrations during fiscal year 21, which is fantastic. But, um, obviously that.
But obviously, that absorbs a lot of bandwidth that we have in-house, which, which, while it reduces the outside counsel costs, it, it also reduces our capacity in the office. So I, I absolutely believe that we have a need for somebody to be working an additional 10 hours a week. And given that the position is vacant, this is the opportunity to do it now.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Counselor Rotundo has typed in the chat. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to show my support. I feel sometimes I've probably taken a lot of their times. I know even during the charter commission or the charter committee, there was discussion of possibly looking into getting another attorney even for the council. But I feel that this would give an opportunity to increase the part-time to a full-time, to really give us an opportunity, like when we do, as a council, come to them, this will be able to concentrate a little bit with us as well. So I just want to give full support behind this full-time position.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Houseman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I support this, this order and, and increasing this. I mean, I, I think that the, the, the load of work on the city solicitor's office on behalf of the city certainly warrants a full-time staff. Or, you know, these, these kinds of hours that are suggested of, of, of three working attorneys. I do think that the question of, you know, additional resources, you know, sort of a resource lawyer or research lawyer for the council is a separate issue. I don't think they're incompatible, but in any event, I, I view that it really is a separate issue. I, I, I do think that Solicitor Williams certainly could, you know, benefit, the, the city could benefit, the council and the mayor's office could benefit from having additional full-time position in the solicitor's office. So I, I support this, I support this order.
Thank you, Counselor Houseman. Counselor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. Um, I also want, wanted to support this order and echo the sentiments of the, especially Counselor Rotundo, how, I know how you, like, important it was, especially in my first term, to use them as a resource a lot of the time to understand a lot of the issues that we were trying to either put forward or how it would impact the city. And I, I really appreciate the amount of work. I know that a lot of my emails were sent late at night or on the weekend, and I always got a response. And I just, I know that that office has to be working a lot more than the, the average nine-to-five type employee. So I also support this, this change and, and, and they have my full support. And also, I wanted to say that I think Counselor Copeland also wanted to weigh in on this, but he got bumped down, so.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Let's go back to Counselor Copeland I missed.
Yeah, no problem. Counselor President, he, he, he saw me eventually there. Thank you. So I think this is definitely, I haven't had much work with, with this department, but I know from being in business and everything else, this is definitely crucial and important, especially as we grow as a city. I had, I did have one question because we talked about budgetarily where the money would come from. So can you just go over that again briefly? You mentioned it coming out of a, a separate or different budget from a different department, potentially?
I can jump in and field that one, if you'd like, Counselor. The way we're proposing to fund this year's cost is entirely within the Solicitor's Department budget. It will be a, a transfer within Solicitor Williams' existing budget. There'll be no increase to appropriations. We're just going to shift some money within her budget to cover the remainder of the cost. The communication also makes note of next year's impact to the budget because it is relevant to your decision this evening. If we do go full-time, there will be an impact to next year's budget, which we would, the mayor would request be funded at a full level come FY 23.
All right, perfect. And for that, the year after, so the first year to come out of the solicitor's budget, the next year, we'd be looking for that becoming out of the city budget itself as, as a whole. Is that correct?
As part of the, the typical annual budget request process, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Els. And thank you.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes, I concur. I think we need this position. I understand that this, kind of what Counselor Copeland talked about, budgetarily, adding another position, it's definitely needed. But are we looking at cutting another position in next year's budget? Or are we just, are we looking at it as like a, an add-on?
This would, this would be, this is taking a part-time to a full-time, and we anticipate requesting next year during the, the FY 23 budget process that it be, that it be fully funded as a full-time. And, and, you know, we'll have a better sense on the, on the other two lines, the outside counsel and the litigation lines. As I said, those, those can tend to ebb and flow, but, you know, we'll be tracking those through the course of the year and see, you know, what makes sense to request at that time on those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. I'm also in support of adding the, the, increasing this part-time position to full-time. I know firsthand that I have, like, a, a short list of very strange things that I've had to ask for help with from the Solicitor's Department. More than one of them involves chickens. So I, and, and that may seem like a small thing for, like, for me to even share with this, but in reality, it's a very big thing for one of our citizens, right? So I really appreciate how the Solicitor's Department handles huge problems and huge tasks like labor contracts, and then also has time to relate to a neighborhood issue. I do have a little bit of a concern about the, the lasting impact on the budget that this will have. I would love to, if we can sort of monetize the, the time that, and the savings that maybe the department has experienced because of the work of Mr. Dole with the labor contracts. I think that would be a really nice number, just to have in my mind and to be able to share with constituents. Because I know that does make a difference. And so maybe at a, you know, in, in the next couple of weeks or so, we could kind of just get a sense of the, the dollar savings that his work might have saved the city on something like, you know, labor negotiations.
And our solicitor, Ms. Williams, has her hand up. Ms. Williams?
So Counselor Rand, back of the envelope. With respect to savings, you know, I don't know the exact number, but on average, I would say each unit in negotiations or per year is about $10,000 for, for the units that Assistant Solicitor Dole has been taking care of. So, you know, right there, those, that's four units. And, and the arbitrations that he handled last year, where they're basically trials. And, and, you know, if we had had to hire outside counsel for those, that was five trials. Easily, I think, the outside counsel bill for each one of those for their time could have been close to $10,000 for each arbitration. And, and, and Assistant Solicitor Dole handled all of those. And again, he did a great job. And, and, but, and it also took up a significant amount of time, which obviously means, you know, other priorities get bumped. So that's, those aren't precise numbers. Those are, those are just back of the envelope, kind of in an envelope, what I would project the costs of those individual things to be.
That's really helpful. Thank you so much. I think it means a lot to have that number to, I think, just to share with people as we, we have to explain, like, oh, we're adding a position and we, every budget season, we do hear about what a new full-time position does to the budget. So I think it's really important to also share that, you know, that was, he potentially saved the city $90,000. So that's, that's really important. Thank you.
And, and Mr. President, if I could, just to, to what Counselor Rand just said, I think maybe a helpful way to look at it is that we're really asking you to add about a third of a position, not adding a position, right? I mean, you know, it's, I mean, that, that part-time position has, has worked a lot of hours o, over the last several years. So it's, it's greater capacity, but it's not a brand-new position either.
True, yeah. And I guess I'm just hearing Mr. Els's mantras of what it does to add someone to benefits to the city, so.
But, but, but the position already was benefited.
Oh, okay.
The position already was, already qualified for benefits. So this is, this is specifically the additional dollars that would go to the additional hours.
Got it. So it's really only 10 more hours?
It, it's 10, but when it needs to be more than 10, it's more than 10.
But it's.
Just officially, that, that's how it's.
The salary's the same. The salary's for 10 hours.
The rate, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's helpful.
Counselor Houseman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment on, on Solicitor Williams', you know, estimates. I, I, I think, not that I have any exposure to the work that Counselor Dole has, has done, but I think that the numbers that she talked about, that would have, for the cost of outside counsel to do the work that she was referring to, sounds to me, you know, right in the money, right in the ballpark. So I, I, I think that from a, from a monetary point of view, in terms of savings, by having some of these capacities in-house, that the number she's talking about sound, sound, sound to me as a, as a practicing lawyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor K. Would you like us to take, can we take action on this this evening, since it's not a new appointment?
Ms. Williams, I believe so, right?
Absolutely, and we want to get the position posted tomorrow, if you act on it, if you approve it.
So if everybody's comfortable, I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor K. L.'s request.
Go move.
Second.
And a roll call?
James?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Before we go to communications, some other city offices and boards, I inadvertently forgot that we did have a public speaker this evening. So Mr. Joseph Kane, are you still here, Mr. Kane? Are you signed up to speak about affordable housing for three to five minutes?
Hey, yeah, I am here.
There you are. The floor is yours, sir.
Hi, everyone. It's my first time attending.
Name and address.
My name is Joe Kane. I live at 85 Hale Street, Apartment 1. So how does this work? Do I, am I able to ask questions, or is it just me speaking?
No, it's just you speaking tonight.
Okay. All right, well, I think I made some notes of things to say. So my wife and I moved here about a year ago, and yeah, I've just had a number of concerns. Namely, you know, that Beverly, you know, doesn't feel as inclusive as, you know, Salem and maybe some other places around here. We made something of a fuss about the Blue Lives Matter flag that is right at the corner of the cemetery, across from Corner Variety, which is pretty prominent. And, you know, I guess technically is on a plot that's owned by the, some retired cop association. So I understand that's being allowed. We were glad to hear that, I guess, a Juneteenth flag got raised briefly at City Hall, is that right? And then the "Hate Has No Home" near flag is now up, is that correct? Yeah, that's encouraging. Yeah, I know, Kaja and the Human Rights Committee have been meeting with the mayor and others about that. So, yeah, I think some of our concerns are perhaps starting to be addressed, which is nice. You know, I think there's a lot of room to grow. You know, this, this town doesn't feel, I think, very, very inclusive still. I think taking a number of measures would be helpful, including potentially following in the footsteps of Lynn and Northampton and other towns that have established unarmed crisis response units within, you know, or I guess as, yeah, as first responders in, in certain cases with police calls. I understand there's already a crisis response team within the police department that is armed. And, you know, I think, setting aside some money from the police budget, which, which I see has increased at $250,000 to $500,000 a year, to establish an unarmed crisis response team would be, you know, it seems like it wouldn't be that hard at, at this, at the scale that, you know, for instance, Lynn did it. If you scale their $500 to the size of the Beverly Police Department, it would be about an $180,000 commitment for us. In terms of public displays of inclusivity, I would like to see, in the cemetery, I understand there might, might have been a motion, Scott maybe might be able to speak to this. I don't know if he's introduced it yet, but perhaps some sort of memorial for, for Juneau. Is that her name? I guess, there is, Scott, maybe you can chime in? Or I don't know, I guess I'm not allowed to ask any questions, but, um.
When you're done speaking, I'll ask for, uh, councils if they want to make a brief remark.
Okay. Then I guess I'll keep going. So I have a few other concerns I'd like to raise, if there's time. One is that the Horribles Parade, or whatever they call it, the Terribles Parade, or that thing that they do in the farms on the fourth. You know, I, I, I really have a problem with, you know, that being permitted. I understand that they're not given street closures for that and that they just illegally do it. I understand that that's been the answer when people have asked about this in the past, that it has not been, you know, legally, you know, sanctioned. And, and I don't know why it's permitted. It's, you know, openly racist and misogynistic and really just makes Beverly a place that, you know, my wife and I are not comfortable living. I also want to hear if anybody has anything to say about, you know, the fee in lieu of developing affordable housing. If, if there's a sense that, that, that those fees that have gone into the Affordable Housing Trust have actually developed a single unit of affordable housing that wouldn't otherwise have been built? Because my understanding is that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, funds that have gone into a couple of projects, you know, haven't, you know, been significant enough to make or break those projects. My sense is that probably doing away with fee in lieu, as a number of other towns have done in, in Massachusetts, is, is pretty obvious, just low-hanging fruit, for, you know, developing affordable housing. Within Beverly, obviously, there were some missed opportunities, you know, the Elliot Street development and, and a few others. I also wanted to follow up about, in 2016, I guess there was a report commissioned, the Beverly Housing Needs Assessment. There is a consultant, Karen Soonerborg, who I, I guess is the, the main author. And there were some conclusions, some steps, some follow-up steps that, that were recommended by this consultant that have not been pursued, including changing the permitting for accessory dwelling units. Right now, they're by special permit. A lot, in a lot of towns, they're by right. That doesn't necessarily increase, you know, the number of, you know, in-law apartments by a radical amount, even in places where, where it's by right. You know, people aren't doing it left and right, and it wouldn't radically change things overnight. But I think it could make a difference, right, for a family that, you know, is kind of having trouble with their mortgage and, and, you know, it would make, it would be sensible. It would make it would be sensible, I I I think, to allow them to, you know, develop or rent out, uh, existing. You know, unit on their property, you know, rather than only using it for in-laws and then getting rid of the kitchen or whatever the the current. Kind of. Outdated policy is. I also wanted to bring up the CPA surcharge, um, I understand it's one percent, and I wanted to. See if I just wanted to ask if there's been any any momentum for potentially increasing it to. I understand three percent is the maximum surcharge for the Community Preservation Act that towns can can assess. And that seems. Sensible to me, um, and I I would, I'm curious if any, uh, council members. Or the mayor have have pushed for that, or how close we have gotten to. Increasing the surcharge, uh. You know, unfortunately, I guess it can be used for. You know, historic purposes, including. Redoing, you know, stained glass windows in the cabin or something, I can't even remember, but, um, you know, it doesn't all go to. You know, helping the marginalized, which I think is a shame, but a lot of it, uh, it sounds like does go to helping the marginalized, and I think increasing. That, uh, from one to three percent would be sensible. I'm also concerned about biking, uh, I'm an avid cyclist and I don't bike around here. Um, this is the worst probably of any place I've lived. I.
You're on about, you're you're almost to ten minutes, so you want to wrap it up quick?
Okay.
Wrap it up with something you like about Beverly.
Yeah, no, I think, um, I I think that's enough. I mean, I I don't understand, I I guess, you know, why somebody would come to the meeting just to sing the praises or whatever, I I I love Beverly, I live here, I grew up. Coming here for the summers, my parents would, I think, rent a place out in. What's now called the Town Homes of Beverly or something, it's used to be Windsor Courts, um, I was a tiny tyke, I learned to bike at Lynch Park. This place is, yeah, near and dear to my my heart, my uncle used to live at. Uh, fifty or sixty rental, you know, they've got the pool there in between the buildings, that's where I learned to swim. I really want to live here for my whole life, it's just like, kind of shockingly, after living in a few other places, including. Pretty progressive Amherst and several other fairly progressive places. Um, I'm just kind of surprised, uh, how not very progressive or inclusive this place feels. So.
Well, you know, you've given us an awful lot of, uh, good things to think about, and I would think a a great idea would either re- reach out to one of us individually. And sit down and have a conversation, you live on Hale Street and eighty-five Hale Street, is that Ward two or is it Ward four?
I think four.
Four. Give your Ward four city councillor a call, sit down and have a chat with him, and then maybe he can bring something forward to us.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know sort of what would be a good way to express some of what I'm feeling, uh, so sorry if this is the not the appropriate forum.
No, it's a it it it's a great way to start the conversation, especially with somebody that wants to be here and wants to be involved, you know, we really appreciate it, Joe.
Thank you, yes.
Right, thank you. Now, we are on back to our regular meeting with communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number one fifty-three from the city clerk, the election warrant for the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one preliminary municipal election on Tuesday next week.
And is this a receiving place on file, or it's something that we need to approve to have an election? Approved, I would entertain a motion to approve order number one fifty-three per our city clerk's request.
So moved.
Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Copeland.
Yes.
Bowman, yes. Flaherty.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Hausmann.
Yes.
Rand.
Yes.
Rattundo.
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes.
Order number one fifty-four, dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation the following resident as a city council appointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Miss Amy Benjamin. Twenty-six Yankee Way, her camp term will be effective until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Respectfully, Paul Guanci, Council President. Um, Amy Benjamin was trying to be here tonight, she's on vacation, and she just texted me earlier that she is, um, her excursion got pushed back, so she was not going to be able to make it.
Okay, so why don't we, I will just refer to, um. The Committee on Public Services, how's that?
Yep.
And then maybe she'll be here in two weeks.
Yes, that's right, it's a faster.
Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Sure. Okay, order number one fifty-five relating to the communication from the Beverly Retirement Board, cost of living adjustment for retirees from twelve thousand dollars to thirteen thousand dollars.
Um, would you read the letter, or do you want me to read the?
Dear Honorable City Council, chapter one eighty-eight of the Acts of two ten, an act relative to municipal. Leave established under local option, a retirement system may increase the base of a retiree's benefits that. Any cost of living adjustment, COLA, would apply to. Currently, any COLA voted by the retirement board applies to a rep retirees' first twelve thousand of pension benefits. Recently, the retirement board voted to grant a three percent COLA, which took effect in July of each year, a three percent COLA applies to the first twelve thousand. Dollars of benefits represents thirty dollars each month per retiree or more than three hundred and sixty. Or not more than three hundred and sixty annually, retirees receiving benefits of less than twelve thousand receive a three percent on their total pension benefit, which is less than full value of three hundred and sixty dollars annually, using the three percent example above. At its August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Beverly Retirement Board voted unanimously unanimously in favor of decreasing the COLA. Base from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand to take effect on July first, twenty twenty-two. If approved by the Beverly City Council, this adjustment will apply to a retiree's first thirteen thousand in benefits for any future COLA. To illustrate this proposed adjustment, if the board board were to grant a three percent COLA. On thirteen thousand, the new monthly COLA amount would be thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per month per retiree, as opposed to thirty dollars if the base remained at twelve thousand. Three hundred and ninety dollars versus three sixty per year, currently, there are four hundred and eighty-two retirees in the Beverly Retirement System. If all retirees receive the full thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per month, which they will not. The estimated additional annual cost to the retirement system is a hundred and eighty. Seven thousand nine hundred and eighty. Dollars. As this is local option to the Beverly Beverly Retirement Board, respectfully request the consideration of increasing the COLA base a month. From twelve thousand to thirteen thousand effectively June first, twenty twenty-two. If the recommended increase is approved by the city council, this board recommends visiting the COLA base for the future adjustments once the funding ratio reaches seventy-five percent. Respectfully submitted, Richard Pierce, Chairman.
Uh, I'm going to go to our Finance Director, Brian Ailes, because he is part of the Retirement Board, one of the five voting members, correct, Mr. Ailes?
That's correct, Mr. President. I'm obviously happy to answer any specific, um, that you all may have in terms of questions, um, but I would also just like to acknowledge. That this issue has come before, um, this body, the City Council, uh, twice, uh, in my tenure on the board. Uh, both times, it was a. Somewhat of a split decision coming out of the Retirement Board, um, and somewhat of a split decision ultimately by the council, and it and it ultimately never passed. This time, the Retirement Board is recommending this unanimously. And the reason, uh, for, uh, that, in my, uh, kind of summation of our of our discussion, is that. The previous two times that that the request came before the City Council. The financial situation of the Retirement Board was significantly different than it is right now. We know, um, based on the last actuarial valuation that was performed, which was in January of twenty twenty. That the funding ratio of the system at that point was at sixty-one point three percent funded. And we also know that, um, the bond rating agencies had, uh. May recognize that as, uh, a weakness within our financial structure within the city, so much so that, um, they felt if it deteriorated further, it could have an impact on the city's bond rating. Uh, that personally is why I opposed it the last two times. This time, I voted, uh, in favor of it, uh, as did the rest of the board members. What has happened over the last two years since the last valuation, as you all are aware in some some way or another, that the the market and the investments that the city. I'm sorry, that the Retirement Board holds, uh, on behalf of the retirees, has appreciated significantly. So much so that if the actuorials were to come in today and do evaluation. Um, assuming everything was equal, except for the amount of money we have in reserves. The funding ratio would go from roughly a sixty-one percent funding ratio up to over a seventy percent funding ratio. So even with this type of increase to the, uh, benefits that the retirees will see. We will still show considerable appreciation towards the goal of a fully funded pension system. Um, and so, given that environment, we collectively felt it really is the time where it's a win-win-win. The retirees are able to, um, increase, uh, the amount of COLA they receive, i- if this gets, uh, approved. The system itself continues to appreciate value, uh, which would continue to be seen favorably by the rating agencies. Um, and the the really, uh, one more piece I want to highlight is that we feel. Given the appreciation in the funding ratio, we can still maintain the amortization schedule that we have to pay. The retirement system off. By, uh, right now, we're on a schedule for twenty thirty-three, we can still maintain that timetable. Even with this increase, and it wouldn't impact, uh, that, which, if it did impact it, it would mean that more money would need to be appropriated. To the pension line each year through the budget process, but we don't feel that's going to be the case, given the appreciation in the assets. I'll stop there, but, well, before I do, there is one more piece we did discuss towards the end of the meeting, uh, and that we included in the letter here towards the. Towards the latter part of the letter, um, where we recognize there's a balance, um, between, um, the benefits that our members, uh, both current and retirees. Should be receiving this, these are their assets by law. And so we understand that, but we also understand that that there's a give and take here, and that, um, ultimately, the taxpayers end up paying portions of this. And so we, uh, collectively, um, thought it would be a good recommendation to, um, given where the valuation's at now. To not revisit, uh, any further increases until we hit, uh, a threshold of seventy-five percent funding ratio. Which could could happen, depending upon the market, within the next couple of years, could happen beyond that, I I we don't know, because we don't have a crystal ball. But we think that would be the responsible, uh, approach to any other adjustments that might be requested.
Thank you, Councilor Ailes, uh, yeah, Councilor Ailes, no, uh, Finance Director Ailes, uh, Councilor Rattundo, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I think, uh, Mr. Ailes just kind of answered my question, as I know, um, last year. When we discussed this, it was the, uh, funded balance that we were concerned about. Um, where the numbers were that, you know, a ten-year was really the goal that we were looking at, getting to that point of seventy-five percent, you just just mentioned that the board. Has recognized that is a number that we should be holding, maybe in the future to get to. When they decide to come look for maybe another bump, I'm in favor of. Going with this COLA increase, I mean, we've seen the cost of living going up considerably, especially since the pandemic, but it's nice to at least see. That the board is recognizing that we have to make sure that we can fund it in the future, and I know. You know, the stock market's been hot right now, but obviously, the stock market could crash this as quickly, and I know we're looking at a twenty-five to a fifty-year. Outreach of this, so I just wanted to kind of be conscious about that as well as, you know, the market goes up, it goes down as well.
Thank you, Councilor Rattundo, Councilor Hausmann.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President, um, I I have, uh, two questions. And I guess a comment, one is. If I could just get some clarification from, um. Uh, Chairman Pierce's letter. Uh, one, two, three, third paragraph, he says. If all retirees receive the full thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per month parentheses, which they will not. Close parentheses, the estimated additional annual cost of the retirement system is X, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. I guess that's per year. Can, uh, Mr. Ailes, can you, uh, explain the which they will not parenthetical? Um, and and what the number would be, and why he says which they would not?
Sure, um, it's important to note, too, that, um, in this letter, the hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Is the annual cost going from the retirement system out to the retirees. Okay, um, and that's different than an increase that might be necessary. From the city's appropriation, because there's, um, the time value of money and the and the discount rates that are factored into the actuarial valuations. Um, affect the monetary. Value of future earnings, et cetera, et cetera, so I, that may confuse it more than, you know, um, make it easy to understand. But as for the parenthetical, uh, part of it to your question. There are a number of retirees that do not meet the twelve thousand dollar threshold currently, they receive less than that in an annual benefit. So therefore, they only receive three percent of whatever their full benefit would be, so if someone only gets ten thousand dollars a year. They're not going to receive the full, uh, three hundred and sixty thou- three hundred and sixty dollar increase, they're just going to receive a three hundred dollar increase.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies that question, next question. And and Councilor Rattundo sort of alluded to this. If we were to have another great recession or even a less great recession. How does the funding, how how would that affect the funding ratio? Because right now, the recommendations are based upon the improvements and the investments, which give a better funding ratio. So maybe a different way of asking the question is, how much impact? Does m- market valuation generally have on what our existing. Uh, funding ratio is and what it could be in the future if we were to have a significant recession?
Yeah, that's a fair question, um, you know. Right now, all of our assets are held in a wealth management fund managed by the Pension Retirement Investment Trust. They are very well diversified, uh, they are known for such, so we even within the holdings within the hundred and. Oh, our last statement put the va- asset value at a hundred and seventy-five million, so the hundred and seventy-five million that's sitting in this fund. Is diversified in a way that would hopefully buffer any large fluctuations in sectors within the investment community. You know, we we have a significant amount of the holdings that are in, uh, fixed income, for instance, so those wouldn't fluctuate as much, uh, because those are fixed into, you know, um. Like bond securities and things of that nature.
Yeah.
But it is important to know that one hundred percent of the board's holdings, the whole hundred and seventy-five million. Is invested in some form or another, right, so if there is a recession, sure, it's susceptible to it. But I I do feel that. If that were to occur, you would see all of the systems fluctuating in a consistent way. And so, um, you know, I don't want to speak for standard importers or moody's, uh, but I think that they would take that into consideration where it's a market fluctuation. Not an issue of mismanagement or implementing policies that affect the solvency of the fund or anything like that.
If I may, Mr. President, just a follow-on question. So, um. Thank, thank you for that answer, uh, Mr. Ailes. I I. How much does the additional? Well, so the 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 ability to, uh, have, or the the fact of a better funding ratio would be favorably viewed by bond rating agencies. On one hand, but at the same token, it also means more outlay by the city's budget or a greater allocation of the city's budget. To these contributions. Is that, is that correct? In other words, is there a sort of a countervailing factor that the body agencies would take into effect? Related to, you know, a setback, uh, in the market?
Um, so I I I heard that question kind of as two different things, is with. So the first piece of, uh, your your question. About the, uh, increase in the funding ratio and how that affects the city's contribution. What I would recommend is to. What I would recommend as the finance director and as a member of the board is that we continue to stay the course in terms of our funding contributions. We've committed to an amortization schedule to get to solvency, which is more aggressive than the law requires. We want to stay that course. If we begin pulling out the time with which we get to the theoretical hundred percent, that's a decision. That's what I was referring to earlier about a policy decision or, you know, a operational decision that inadvertently or intentionally affects the solvency of the system. That would be a bad move to do something like that. But because the funding ratio is increasing, what it does mean is there may be an opportunity to still meet that timeline. But potentially, and we won't know till the actuorials reconfigure their numbers, potentially peel off some of that. It's, it's possible, because now you've got a much larger pool of assets going to the same, theoretically, the same amount of liability. So the city wouldn't need to pony up as much. The city basically benefits in, in some form by the appreciation of the market. And the theory that we had at the board was, yes, the city and the taxpayers are benefiting from the appreciation of these assets. So shouldn't the retirees and the beneficiaries who have also paid into this system?
Yeah, I certainly support the recommendation for both you and Mr. Perry, given your conservatism in the past on this. So I, I mean, I, 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 I support this motion. I think, you know, as a matter of equity for our retirees, if we can do this, we, we should do this. But I also want to be mindful of the, you know, of, of, of what we're taking on and, and the factors that play in, in both directions in, in, in taking this move. My comment is, so I made out my questions, my comment is that I appreciate and my support is, uh, does take into account the commitment by the board to, a- as I understand it, at least a commitment to not come back to the council looking for another increase until the funding ratio hits seventy-five percent. And that, that is for me, an important factor in deciding to support this. So that we're not having this conversation again and again. And in find ourselves back where we were the last two times we had this come forward. So as long as we're moving in the right direction, given the conservatism both you and Mr. Perry have had on this, if you're in favor of this, I, I, I view it favorably as well. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Before I go to other members of the council, why don't we hear from our budget analyst, Jerry Perry? He's been here the whole time. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. A couple of comments. I sent you a memo on Friday with some attachments with various metrics for your consideration. Bottom line to it, unlike other times, I am recommending that you do pass this. I think we have reached a point where I'm more comfortable with our financials. The two areas that I focused on with this, and I'm really pleased to see that both the council and the board is focusing on it, but the funded ratio is the most important metric, in my professional opinion, and something that you really want to hone in on. I'm also extremely pleased that the board has recognized this seventy-five percent threshold that they wouldn't come back to. I think that kind of really got me over the end zone, if you will, to go along with this. I think it's the right approach, but I want to be crystal clear. Even though there are internal reviews of, of the funded ratio, I certainly would not entertain any recommendation to you unless the seventy-five percent is authorized and approved by PERAC in their actuorials, as opposed to an internal review. We need to have an independent outside review of that before we get that seventy-five percent ratio. And I'd ask Ms. Kent to make sure that, hopefully she'll reflect my comments in minutes there about the PERAC issue. To me, that's extremely important. To Council Hausmann's comments, I want to maybe give you a little, alleviate some of your concerns about. And I have had some conversations with a few of you on the phone. If, if there's a downturn in the economy and the market drops, and that's, those are great questions. It's important to understand that the, the, the assumed rate of return, in other words, what we anticipate to see going forward over the next many years is seven point one five percent. That's what we are guestimating over the long term. We don't look at it in a short term. It's like twenty years, they look at this stuff. And as long as we stay on our assumed rate of return, you should not worry too much about, you know, a ten percent market correction, things of that nature. Because it'll, it'll kind of take care of itself in the long run. I can share with you, from nineteen eighty-five to the year twenty twenty, we have had a return on our investment portfolio of eight point seven seven percent. So right there alone, because you look at that over, was it twenty-five, thirty years, whatever that is, you can see how we are pretty much protecting the assets. So I, I would, I would not concern yourself too much with regard to, you know, a drop in, in the market. They build that into it. A- a- and, again, don't worry about that. Bottom line to it, I want to applaud the Retirement Board for that seventy-five percent threshold. That's huge. That is really protecting not only the taxpayers, but quite frankly, in my view, it protects the pensioners. The people who are benefiting from this. And, and it shows fiscal responsibility and fiscal discipline. So as such, again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions anybody may have, but I would recommend that the council adopt the, the request of the pension board.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And thank you for your memo that you sent out this week. Let's go to Councilor Copeland.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Perry, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Perry, you actually answered some of the questions I had as well. So thank you there. This might have been in, in, in all the paperwork, but I also wanted to ask, when was the last time that the fund was increased? Do you have an idea when that was?
I think I can help you there. The, the, by statute, it's, the, the minimum is twelve thousand dollars. So in actuality, I don't, I don't have the history, but if, if the minimum is twelve thousand dollars, it's never been, to my knowledge, increased. So this would probably be the first time.
That's correct, Mr. Perry. I would just add, though, that, that the increases are cumulative. So it really is in the form of a COLA. So if, if you make twelve thousand dollars in pension in one year, and the next year it goes to twelve thousand three hundred and sixty, the next year it'll go to twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty. And the next year, it goes up another three six. So it continues to build over time. So the benefits have continued to increase. It's just the, the calculation base that is used to determine how much of an increase gets given per retiree.
Okay. All right. And the other thing I wanted to say as far as the, you know, from, from your perspective and our perspective, it's a little bit different, but they work together. You're looking at the, you know, the economic case for something. We also look at the economic, but also the, the optics of it and, and representing, you know, the people of the city that were responsible for. So, so I know sometimes with the optics, it could seem like it's not the best move, but also there's, there's times like this, I believe, when the optics support moving forward and doing something that I think would be in the best interest of the city or those who have worked for the city. Even though it requires additional spending, I think where we're at with the different funds that we have and the money that we've been able to save, the rainy day fund and everything else, I think with the hundred and eighty-seven thousand increase, although it is an increase, it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which I don't take lightly at all. I think with the position that we're in and the money that we've been able to sock away, it's not something that, that would in any way hurt us or be a bad decision for us to make. And I think as far the, the health and well-being of the city, we also have to look at how competitive we are as a city with these different aspects, so it makes sense to move forward with. So, so thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Ailes?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your comments, Counselor. I do want to just clarify, though, for the, the council and those listening at home, this is not, this will not result in, in an increase in cost in the budget. We can still maintain the, the planned pension pay-down schedule that we've built into all of our forecasting models. And in the letter that was written from the chairman, the hundred and eighty-seven thousand is not an increase. I know it says that in the letter. That's the total value. The increase is only a small portion of that one eighty-seven. And that is an increase going from the retirement system to the retirees. It's, it's separate, and there's a brick wall between the retirement system and the city, so that it doesn't flow directly from the city to the retirees. I just wanted to make that clear, because it won't, it, it more, more likely than not will not have a monetary impact on the budget for the city, I don't feel.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Uh, how about Council Flowers?
Thank you, President Guanxi. So, most of the questions that I had have been answered, but I just wanted to refresh my own memory on one other aspect of this. Mr. Ailes, you mentioned in the time that you've been on the board, it's come up two times that matches the time that I've been on the council. And one of those, the most recent time was as the pandemic was unfolding. And so I think that also presented a complication, but from the beginning, this has been something that I've been in favor of, if we could make it happen. I just want to refresh my memory. Is it correct to say that we're one of the few communities in Massachusetts that are still at the minimum twelve thousand dollar level as well?
I believe, and, and Mr. Slate, I know you were at the meeting, you might recall this as well, but I think we're one-third, one-third of the systems, maybe even less, are at the twelve thousand dollar level. And we are one of those.
There are approximately fifteen to eighteen of the hundred and four systems are at twelve thousand. So we are at the bottom of that. That is correct.
And the range, the range goes from twelve thousand to eighteen thousand, the average, as we, as the board discussed, I, I was, Rick Pierce was still the chair until last week when my term began, but I attended the meeting and, and the average, I believe, is a little over fourteen thousand. So we're, we're, we're at the bottom. We're moving up if the council approves this, but we're still, we're, we'll still be below the average, but the, the Retirement Board was very, I would say was comfortable after a long discussion with the provision that was added to the letter at the end that Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry both were very strong about, that, that seventy-five percent threshold be the next gate that would need to be met at whatever time it is. But to Councilor Copeland's question, that's the, that's where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Slate.
And Mr. Perry, did you say that? So that means about we're in the bottom fifteen to eighteen communities? Is that what you just said? I'm sorry.
Yeah, out of the hundred and four systems is probably fifteen, eighteen, maybe as many as twenty that, the formula is at twelve thousand. Probably, we're going to kind of be jump in the middle now if, if you do agree to thirteen thousand. There's somewhere fourteen and fifteen, but yeah, we, we're in that. So again, going back to my memo to you, I'll, given the whole totality of the financials of the community, I'm comfortable with this. I think it's the right thing to do. And and again, I'm pleased that the board is going to stick that seventy-five percent rule per PERAC.
Thank you. I, yes, I'm, based on everything that we've been talking about, all things considered, I also think morally and ethically, then I think we can do better than being in the bottom fifteen to eighteen communities in the state for our retirees. So I'm, I'm pleased that this is coming before us again. And that it feels like we really do have both the will and the ability to make this happen for, for people who have worked for our city. And, you know, I also think about not just people who have worked for our city, but in some cases, it's spouses of people who have worked for, for our city and really, I know, rely on these benefits to be able to, to survive. So I'm, I'm grateful that this is coming before us again.
Thank you, Council Flowers. Anybody else before I call for a vote? Hi, Wes.
Very quickly, the, the exact number is twenty-two. I counted it again out of the hundred and four. And on a personal note, I think we should all recognize, he wasn't able to attend the meeting tonight because he's on vacation, but I met Rick Pierce when he was fire chief and I was a rookie counselor. So he gave many years of service in the fire department, and he's been the chair, and he's been a member of the retirement board, Brian, I think, for twelve years, four terms, I believe. And his term ended last week, and, and I think we all, citizens of Beverly, taxpayers, residents, members of the retirement system, counselors, all owe him a big debt of gratitude for his service in, in his various roles on our behalf.
Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the COLA increase recommended by the Beverly Contributory Retirement Board. And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Thank you very much.
Order number one fifty-six.
Order number one fifty-six is a letter to the mayor regarding the return of the handicap signs on Cabot Street from Councilor Ames.
Councilor Ames, you, you want to read your letter to Mayor Cahill?
Honestly, I received a text from Mayor Cahill, and I was very pleased to hear that they replaced, they replaced the signs on Cabot Street last week. So I'd been asking monthly since April, so I'm just happy they're back. And I think it's important that people who have a tough time getting around, getting around sometimes have a dedicated space that if they want to go to a certain spot, spot downtown, that they can access it. And I have a lot of constituents reaching out to me, so I'm just happy that it happened.
Great. So we will, I'd entertain a motion to receive and place on file Councilor Ames's letter. Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes, and thanks to Mayor Cahill for getting back to Councilor Ames this week. We are on order number one fifty-seven, Ms. Kent.
Order one one, one fifty-seven. Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Dear Ms. Kent, at the meeting of the Beverly Historic District Commission, held on Tuesday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, members of the commission voted four-zero to approve the twenty twenty-one fiscal year annual report to submit to the city council. The annual report is attached here, too. Please do not hesitate to contact Emily Hutchings, Assistant Planning Director in the Beverly Planning Department, and staff to the commission if you have any questions. Respectfully, William Finch, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file. And if anybody has any questions with it, please contact Emily Hutchings. Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. And if you're watching at home and you want to get involved in the city of Beverly, I look at the, the members of the Beverly Historic District Commission, and it looks a little light. So I'm sure there are other boards and commission member, boards and commissions that are short on members. So if you're watching at home, get involved. Send a letter to the mayor's office and tell them what you'd like to do. Please. Thank you. Order number one fifty-eight.
Order number one fifty-eight. Dear Honorable City Council, I would like to hereby reappoint, subject to your review and any recommendations, Elizabeth Dunn, sixteen Greenwood Ave, to represent Ward Six on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Her term will be effective until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Very truly yours, Dominic Copeland, Councilor Ward Six.
Nice getting an appointment for Council Copeland. Must be the first one. Can we approve that or we have to refer it to somewhere?
No, you can approve it.
I would entertain a motion to approve Councilor Copeland's appointment.
So moved.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Absolutely.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
I am a yes. One fifty-nine.
Order number 159, um, from the city clerk, a Christmas tree permit from Zip's Ice Cream, John Defenzalzo.
Stephen Senzo. Last names.
So you, who's going to correct me in January?
I, I mean, I, I got a feeling the odds on favorite is, and I think she does a little better with Italian names than you, but we really need to have a class. Thank God, Ellen, I got seven more meetings left of this. Go ahead. You do a great job, Ms. Kent. Come on.
Thank you. I try. In my mind, it sounded right. I'm here for the Italian names, guys. Thank you.
All right, move along. Christmas tree license, please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
You can approve it. Rule 22.
Okay. Did I ask for a motion yet or no?
Nope.
I would. Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes, Counsel Flaherty, that was a very non-friendly yes from me. Come on, we're getting through the agenda. Everybody's doing a lovely job. Order number 160.
Do you, would you like me to read this? Do you want Counsel Flowers?
Either Counsel Flowers or Counsel Rand can read it. Please. If they have it in front of them.
Counsel Rand, if you have it, I would defer to you since it's your ward, but I'm happy to if not.
Um, you go for it.
In that case, hold on while I just open the document on my computer.
Very good.
Now you all see how quickly I can do that.
Do you want me to read it?
No, I have it. I just can't. Thank you. It's, it's opening.
I can read it also.
If this doesn't open in a second, I think one of you should go ahead and, oh, I've got it. Just a break of time. Oh, you wanted the cover letter, President Guanxi, not the order.
Right.
Right. I've got that now. Sorry. Dear President Guanxi and fellow city councilors, this letter comes to accompany our proposed amendment to the current city ordinance, Chapter 270, Section 41, parking prohibited at all times. This request is to designate a small portion of Pleasant Street as a no parking at all time zone in the area where the street experiences a bottleneck with parking on both sides of Pleasant Street and approaches the intersection on Hardy Street, with Hardy Street. We have heard from residents on the street for some time about the difficulties this tight area presents, causing problems for waste disposal trucks getting through, snowplows in the winter, and presenting difficulty for school buses navigating that portion of the street. We have consulted with Sergeant Hennaberry as well about this issue. We believe that designating this small portion of the street will reduce the on-street parking on one side by only about two or three spaces total, but will provide for safer passage for vehicles navigating the area and create a safer situation overall. Please consider our proposed amendment to the current ordinance to add no parking at all times along the south side of Pleasant Street from the area, actually, I amended, well, I think you have the current version from you, from, uh, the area in front of 36 Pleasant Street down to the intersection with Hardy, essentially creating no parking along the south side in front of 36 and 38 Pleasant down to Hardy. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of this request, Counsel Julie Flowers at Large, Counselor Estelle Rand, Ward 2. And I would just mention, uh, this was not included in the letter, but part of Sergeant Hennaberry's, uh, work with us on Pleasant Street has included already placing their sort of a temporary no parking, uh, here to corner in front of 38 Pleasant already. And so where it says two to three spaces, I think at this point it amounts to maybe one additional space um, in front of 36 Pleasant. So not reducing parking by much more than it is currently, but does, we, we think will alleviate a bottleneck where the road sort of makes it a slight turn as it heads to Hardy.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers, and thank you, Counsel Rand. Ms. Kent, why don't you, uh, read the proposed ordinance? And then we'll refer it to the Committee on Legal Affairs. And then we'll, uh, have a second reading later this month, right?
Be obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. In the year 2021, an order amending an ordinance entitled Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic, amending Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 41, Parking Prohibited at All Times by adding the following street segment, Pleasant Street, South Side, in front of 36 Pleasant, extending to Hardy Street. Copies of the completed ordinance are on file in the Office of the City Clerk and are available in public review. And this will go in the newspaper on Friday, September 17.
17, 17, correct. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Uh, please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 161, petition from the MBTA, from Bastard, for the petition, the MBTA for commission, communications conduit location from Plan 321823F, Cabot Street.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that for Tuesday, September 28th at 7:45 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes, Counsel Rotundo, I missed you. Did you want to, uh, say something? Did I get you?
Uh, you know what? It was just in regards, you referred it to legal. I just wanted to thank Counsel Rand and Flowers, uh, in regards to that because I travel that street every day in the restaurant. But on a more serious note, my daughter actually, uh, flipped her car at that particular spot last year. So it is a very, um, dangerous and cluttered intersection. So I just want to thank the two of you, uh, for doing this.
Thank you. Always nice to hear something. Uh, and thank God that she was okay. But, uh, saying nice things and praising your fellow counselors. Uh, let's go to unfinished business from a previous meeting.
Order number 143. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded $12,606,097 in American Rescue Plan Act grant, ARPA funds from Mass Executive Office for Administration and Finance, ARPA funds awarded to help states, counties, cities, and tribal governments covering increased expenditures, replenish lost revenue, and mitigate economic harm from the COVID-19 pandemic. Beverly anticipates receiving ARPA funds through various installments. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And we did receive this at our August 2nd meeting, uh, special meeting.
Yes.
It was decided that we would wait a little while before accepting this. Uh, Mayor Cahill, what would be our next steps?
Well, when we spoke last, I, I, I remember asking you folks that, that I hope you'd be ready and comfortable to vote on this by your second meeting of the month, which now is September 28th, recognizing that we are having a public meeting tomorrow evening, um, where the public has been, is being invited to share, you know, insights, thoughts, concerns, priorities that they may see for the funds. Uh, we've successfully met with most of you and still have a couple of meetings to go to try to make sure that we get your input in, in these early stages. So I, I had not expected that you folks would take it up tonight. Just, you know, as I said, I, I've been, I mean, you know, you're going to go in your timeline as, as the legislative body. I say that with all due respect, um, and sincere respect, but I, I was asking you folks to hopefully be ready by your next meeting, but certainly not by tonight.
Okay. Uh, let's ask our budget analyst, Jerry Perry, to make a comment on this. So he's been so patient to hang around this evening. Mr. Perry, anything to add?
Um, well, I wrote you a quick memo there with the other issue. Uh, from my perspective, I don't see any reason to wait. Um, uh, I think the time has come. The administration, as I wrote to you, has already posted, um, uh, a position that they're going to desperately need to monitor this. So they can't fill that until, uh, you know, you approve this. Um, I know that the administration has also met with all of you, I believe individually, as well as myself. I have carefully reviewed this. Um, you know, 12.6 million is something, uh, that is pretty important for the city. Uh, as you know, though, once you approve it, it'll be, uh, the administration's responsibility to determine how it's spent. But he, uh, the mayor has promised, uh, you know, a lot of input, certainly from the council as well as, um, you know, residents of the community. Uh, I can assure you that most or many of the other communities in the Commonwealth have already approved theirs. They're, they're moving along. And, um, you know, I, I see no reason, I, unless there's some policy reason I can't think of that any of the nine of you maybe have, but it would be my view that you approve this tonight and let's get going and let's, uh, get, get working on, uh, how to handle that 12.6 million. So that would be my view, uh, recommendation to the committee, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Uh, Counselor Ames has tapped into the chat. Counselor Ames?
Hey, thanks for letting me speak here, Mr. President. And I tend to agree with the mayor. I think that the, we had a really solid plan to ask for input and, um, my hope was to, number one, get a better understanding from the mayor and his team in the next city council meeting as to where they exactly feel this will move forward. And I think we have some basic outlines, but I think after they get public input, they'll get more. And the second thing I'd also like to really see is the, uh, mayor to put up on the city website exactly how you spent the last year's dollars so that people can understand just the process and what happened last year. And in fact, I, I miss Mr. Ales, but I gave, um, to the ever capable Mrs. Barrett, just, um, another community's, uh, just quick chart, um, as to how they had spent their dollars last year. And she came up with a fabulous question. She said, well, I don't think we have it all in yet. And to which you could see in that community, a line down the bottom, that it wasn't all there. But I think the most important thing is that we, as a government, be transparent as to, um, what we already have done so that when the council approves this and we move forward together after we understand from the community, um, where we're going, that it's just a communal movement forward. And unfortunately, I have to go. But that, that's just my comment on this and, um, hopefully that's the way it'll go tonight. But thanks for letting me speak. And, um, I just really am happy that we've had these conversations with the administration and I look forward to having more of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Counsel Copeland.
Yes, thank you. Just, just real brief. I think, um, like you said, we have a game plan in place. Uh, I know it'll take a little bit longer, but I think it's important to go through the process. Um, so everyone feels they had a say or inclusion, especially members of the council. Uh, they get to get a better understanding of what they're saying yes to. And then if we already had that conversation with the counselors and with the, uh, with the community, I'd feel comfortable 100% saying yes, move forward. I think that's where we're all going to get to anyway, but I'd like us to complete that process. Um, uh, as we said, we would have spoken with the community about it and then speaking with the rest of the counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Copeland. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes, I guess I'm, um, on the line with Mr. Perry said, um, well, us voting tonight doesn't, I don't think has any bearing on the process. Um, we're going to accept the money one way or the other. Um, so I don't think it has any bearing on the process and I'd be comfortable, uh, voting on it tonight.
Anybody else? Counsel Copeland again?
Uh, just real quick, I might just say, it won't have any bearing on, on the process. It's just the, again, the optics of it and, um, you know, the comfortability of, of just moving forward with money and potentially being able to spend right away without having those, those conversations with the community and the rest of the counselors. So I think we said at President's in Beverly that we have those conversations first, uh, before that commences. And not that the mayor would move forward spending, but if we say yes, that could happen right away and we don't have any say.
Okay, Counsel Copeland, you're going to do me a favor to move things along. All it takes is one city counselor to say, I want to hold this vote until our next meeting, and I'm looking forward to you doing that right now.
No problem. I, I would like to hold this vote till next meeting.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Rotundo has to spoil my last hurrah.
Nope, I am going, I am going to, uh, take my knee away.
Okay, that's great.
Counselor Ladder would be very impressed with the, uh, use of the counselor's prerogative.
Right.
Just to say.
So what we'll do is we will, and of course, we all appreciate Mr. Perry's input, and I was more than, more than comfortable, uh, voting on this tonight as I was in August. So, uh, we'll take this up on our meeting and vote in favor of it on the 28th. And I think that we'll all try to chime in or pay attention for a little while tomorrow night's public hearing. Mayor Cahill, can you just give us a, a little rundown about tomorrow night's Zoom meeting?
Yes, thank Mr. President. It's a, it's a Zoom meeting, uh, starting at 7:00 tomorrow evening. The link is on the city website, uh, on the calendar. And, uh, what we'll do is Mr. Ales will be making a brief presentation on, on some of the, um, you know, some of the thoughts we have today. And we, we've, uh, tried to reach out and make sure everybody knows about this. Individuals, groups, anybody with a concern, anybody with a viewpoint that they want to make sure is heard, we want to hear from them tomorrow night.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Cahill.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Kent.
Report of committees.
Oh, damn it. All right. Sorry.
Okay, it's only one, um, but it's in two committees.
What's from committees?
So order number 134, the communication from Counsel Houseman for the road management discussion is in both Public Services and Legal Affairs. So I don't know if that needs to be acted on or what. I know Counsel Houseman has something he wanted to say.
Counsel Houseman, on your order.
Uh, yes, in my, as I wrote in my communication to you and, and Chairman, uh, Counselor Flowers, Counselor Flowers, Chairman of Public Services. Uh, yeah, no, I'd like to just, uh, hold this, uh, hold this matter, um, not act on it. Keep it in committee.
So they voted it out. So I would entertain a motion to refer that back to the two committees.
To both committees?
For both committees.
Okay.
How about a so moved?
So moved.
And the second.
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 Uh, roll call.
Ames?
I'm a favorite, I.
Not there. Copeland?
I'm like, hi.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Uh, yes. So tomorrow night, I wouldn't encourage anybody, uh, that's interested in how the ARPA funds are going to be used to, um, get the link and get on the Zoom meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Uh, our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 28th. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything to add? Fun things going on? Ms. Kent, what do you got?
Um, there's an election on Tuesday, um, this 21st. Yeah, so.
21st, we have a preliminary election. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And every poll will be open because of the mayor's race. There's three candidates for mayor. And in Ward 3, there'll be a preliminary election. There's three candidates in Ward 3. So maybe it'll be busy in Ward 3 and then, um, hopefully busy in the other, uh, five wards.
Yes.
Get on vote. Thank you. Uh, Counsel Rand?
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that Harbor Fest is this Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00, I believe, and it's a little different this year. It takes place at Lynch Park because, um, you know, the harbor area is under construction, but I think it's a nice opportunity to, to, you know, have a traveling harbor, Harbor Fest. Maybe we'll do the Bass River next year. Who knows? So this Sunday at Lynch Park.
From 3:00 to 6:00?
3:00 to 6:00. Thank you.
And I know the Harbor Management Authority and their Chair, Paul Earl, work really, really hard, and I think they'll have a great turnout. And the weather. And the weather looks good on Saturday.
Sunday, yep.
Thank you for bringing that up, Counsel Rand.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, great meeting. We got a lot of work done, good discussion. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Uh, yes, and I'll bang my gavel. I'm gonna say that it was pretty cool to have a member join us from Peru. That's a first time. Have a great couple of weeks, uh, and we'll see you real soon. Thanks for tuning in, if you tuned in. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.